Thank you, everyone. Please be aware that the meeting is audio and video recorded. Let's go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're in a couple of minutes.
So.
Were there any changes on this question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We love claims.
Don't move. Second.
Any questions on the claims?
You don't happen to know how we're doing on the elementary project claims? That's a golly question, isn't it?
Regarding the.
The blue and the painting and all that stuff down there.
They're just working on it, yeah.
Okay, sort of they're not all in yet.
No.
Okay.
Oh, that's that got so that got pushed that got pushed till uh
June.
Yeah. Because they're gonna have to that's gonna be involved cutting probably cutting a hole through that doorway by the multipurpose room.
Yeah.
And getting a crane to lower that in through the chimney stack and all that stuff. But budgetarily, I was just wondering where we were at.
Oh, yeah, I don't. But that's okay.
I tell you what, I think it got expensive.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking too.
I do have a report from Russ to share it tonight, but okay, that's all. Maybe if you have any other questions, I can take some notes after we get to that point too.
Yeah. If we're on budget or.
It doesn't really address that.
Yeah.
I'll tell you, I think the project suspension.
There is the two is the claims on the purple sheet. I assume you saw those.
I did.
And then, yeah.
That's just engineering on.
A FICO. That's engineering.
Yeah, I think that's.
Engineering, yeah. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those. Motion passes. Communications to in front of the board.
So I had a lady walk in my office today. It's kind of a silver village thing. But I had a lady who's moved to Portbatten and she's got a family in the area. And she came in and gave us a long one today to ask if we could add some place for it. I told Roxy I'd give it to her to take the elementary school, but she was real friendly. And Roxy happens to know who she is because she found her dogs.
Yeah, I found her like dog. That was interesting. I had my two daughters with me and normally I don't pick up stray dogs, but like I had my kids with me, so I had to pick them up. We picked up this old dog in front of the elementary school and took the dog to the dead man and then found out that it was Pam.
Pam's.
Pam's dog. And then found out where she lived and returned the dog to her and she was so grateful. She was like crying. She loved the dog. It was like a secret dog.
They had this in the collection from her grand.
Yeah, it was really cool. She's really nice.
So I just thought it was really kind of cool. So I just I just brought that to share with the board.
It's our mascot.
Interesting connection. Oh, it's our old mascot.
Yeah. Let's let us also know that I gave my granddaughter who have seven months a long one for Christmas.
Good job, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you.
At least it wasn't a gridling. Yeah.
I believe this means being recorded.
I forget that sometimes.
There's also a thank you note from Wade and Ariane Clark from Geraldine. This is a family that lost their house in a fire. And so they're thanking the school students and staff for fundraising efforts.
You might recall that we did we wore hats for a week and raised money and between the elementary and the high school middle school, we raised over eight hundred dollars to give to them. So I thought that was pretty pretty cool.
Okay. Um, is there any public comment on non agenda items?
Yes. Don't need to stand up. No, all right. I just I think that we need to have a discussion within our board about our transportation regarding athletics and our route buses. I think sometimes with the weather, I totally get the weather aspect of it. But trying to just get some protocols of why we're canceling the bus route or why we're canceling an activities bus. A couple, a month, month and a half ago or so, my kids' route bus got canceled because of two inches of snow in Geraldine. I drove them to school here and it was dry in Portbatten. So just kind of wondering on that, I totally get it if it's icy. I've been coaching wrestling for four years now and I think we've had four of our meets canceled or us traveling to those meets canceled. One of them was probably a really good reason because of an ice storm. Um, the other ones are just because of snow. And um, you know, I just, I think as a board or as a school, we kind of need to talk about the protocols of why we're canceling. I totally get it for safety of our kids, but a bus is very safe as well. Maybe looking at alternate alternate routes to or where we're where we're gonna go play. Kind of why I'm here, why the apple upset or you know, upset the apple cart was we show up on Saturday to go to Shelby and it's canceled the night before the tournament. We canceled at eight or nine o'clock or so because of drifts on two twenty-three. And so we're canceled. So we call a practice for our kids. It wasn't it wasn't a mandatory practice. We totally get it with the roads and all that. And I show up to the school and there's an activity bus pulling up at about, I don't know what it was, nine, ten. There's an activity bus showed up and our basketball program went to Conrad to participate that day. So I get it that we have to leave earlier in the morning for wrestling to get to our tournaments and maybe the road wasn't plowed. Where I live in Geraldine, the highway was plowed by six thirty. I'm not sure about two twenty-three. Um, an alternate route was to go to eighty-seven, down the Great Falls and back up to Shelby so that we could have our kids actually wrestling then. But just to have this being the fourth time canceling, I think we just need to talk with and I wish Paul was here that we could have these discussions of why these are, you know, why we're making these decisions, especially for our wrestling program. We don't make those tournaments up. It's not a game like North Star got canceled. And then they made that game up on Tuesday. We we don't make up that wrestling time. And so our kids coming out of the break, working their butts off, losing weight and getting down to weight where they need to. And then they find out, you know, we weigh in here at home, then we find out we're not going. I think it's, you know. And then having our basketball program going, it 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 really upset our wrestling team and upset our kids. Because basketball got to participate coming out of the break. Our kids didn't. Our kids wrestled finally in Chester this last week in Cut Bank and our performance really showed. It would have been nice to have Shelby underneath our belt, get the rust off of us, then we can go back in the competition. It was the first tournament of the year that our girls' team didn't place. Granted, we do have some injuries, but we placed before without any injuries up at the Great Falls, C M R Classic, where there's a lot of lot of girls' teams and we placed with girls having injuries there and not wrestling. And so, you know, we've just seen the overall effect that it has. I just hope that we can generate some some good discussions about, you know, why we're really canceling these. You know, the activities and then also the bus route for my kids. I thought it was kind of ridiculous to cancel it for two inches of snow. We live in central Montana. It's gonna snow. And I think our buses are very safe. We were in Cut Bank this weekend. And we had some, I wouldn't say best roads, pretty nasty roads and our bus was very safe. Our bus was warm. It took care of the kids and we were back home. We actually made it to the tournament earlier than we thought we would on some icy roads. So I think putting putting the the bus drivers to use, you know, using their expertise, I think they're pretty safe on that on the roads. So if we can get some discussions going, I think that would be helpful. Also, I have a little bit of a beef with what's in the the book for bus behavior or bus etiquette, maybe. Drinks for our kids. It has to be a closed lid or they have to throw it away type of thing. You know, our kids are only a few years from being an adult, not in the real world. So I think on our activities buses, if the kid makes a mess, a coach is gonna make them clean it up. We're not just gonna leave a mess for the bus driver to clean up. I know for our team, when our wrestling team leaves the bus, it's spotless. We don't leave garbage on the floor. We don't leave garbage in the seats. We 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 make sure that we we have the bus in good shape. And so it's just a little nitpicking deal on our on when I ride the bus of, you know, the drinks and some of the foods and and that. I totally get it. We don't want to soil the bus. But our kids are almost adults and they they need to, you know, if they make a mess, they can clean it up type of thing. So.
Thanks for your comments.
Yep.
And we it's since it's a non agenda item, we can't have any discussion about it now, but we can discuss whether or not to put it on a transportation committee agenda or whatever.
So I wanted to point out Paul's unable to be here tonight and so he asked it's further down on the agenda, but he asked to have a transportation meeting before the February board meeting. So I know that's that he wasn't able to be here tonight, but he did ask and I made sure that we schedule that in the next couple of weeks. He didn't tell me why, but he just he did ask me to have that scheduled. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'm making under the board chair's report. So we will move right on with Roxy.
Oh, wonderful. Roxy, you would have proposed around. And hopefully I sent out my smore January newsletter earlier. I even got your email right for the time frame. Did you get it?
No.
Okay. So like I feel like if I I need like a strategic.
Send it back to him. So yes.
Did you get your email?
You just.
Okay, check it right now. Check it right now and see. You checked it yesterday. You don't check your. Yeah, I checked my email like fifteen times today.
I it could have been timing because I for the time, yeah.
A forward message from me? We'll we'll get together. We'll talk. So anyways, we have had. You didn't see it, did you? Oh my goodness. Okay, it's hard. Alrighty, so we have had it seems like there's two months worth of activities that happened in about two weeks in December. So we had a wonderful Christmas program and I really want to thank Peggy Gannon and Eric Lennington. It was great. The music was fun. The costumes were cute. And even I love sometimes how like the afternoon performance transitions from the evening performance. I feel like the kids only gains gained steam and being just a little bit more like some jokesters and entertainers. So it's great. That was wonderful. We had a great fifth and sixth band concert as well. Um, that was fun and it's so fun. I love being able to see the progression from like fifth and sixth to eighth grade. Wow, what a difference. So we're we're thankful for that. I did want to give a big thank you to Julie Robertson. She organized kind of the art club up here in the high school to come down to the elementary school and paint ornaments with the kids in the multipurpose room. And that was really fun. And she even incorporated preschool, which I love. Yeah, it was wonderful. And we are off to our fourth grade or ski trips this year. So we've already had our third and fourth grade ski trip. So I wanted to give a big thanks to Beth Jones and all the volunteers because I think those days are long and a lot of work. And nobody was injured. There was a child carried up the mountain, I think, in a stretcher, but the injury was okay. You just never know. So um, do you guys have any questions on highlights, anything like that? We're we're back to school and there's, you know, like a full five day week here from here on out for a while. So that's the highlight of January. I'm kidding. So we are busy right now at the elementary school and we have just started our winter benchmarking. So Dibbles has started and we're super thankful. We have Karen Wellman, Margie Schuler come in. So it's great to have the retired teachers in and see them again. We also have a variety of other staff that help out and our good right helps devil Mark Smith. So we're thankful to get that assessment done. So then we can revamp our intervention groups and make sure that we're rolling with academic progress in the new year. And especially, I think it's a great time. The growth already that's coming in from our assessments is awesome to see. And so that's so fun and rewarding to watch our kids grow. It seems like this this part of the year, the kids really start to really take off. So that's exciting. We also have started, the mask window has opened. So we completed that's the state standardized testing for O P I. And Pat, what does the acronym stand for?
Measure of Academic Standards Through Year.
That's perfect. So we've completed the test in the fall and and we got some good data back. I still feel that one of the complaints I would have about the test is that it's still very much a snapshot of a child's understanding at one point in time. You're not able to retake the tests to gain mastery. So while it can inform instruction, you're not able to really show if that child relearned the content or mastered. So it's still very much just like S VAC, but it's just spread throughout the year in smaller testlets. So we'll start that winter benchmark coming or winter testing session here. The windows open and our teachers will have until like mid February to finish that.
So you have to do that at the same time, Dibbles?
Yeah, we so we're not testing because we have all the way until February. So a lot of our teachers have planned and it's third through sixth, so they've planned to start next week or as the MAP standards align with their curriculum.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions about testing? Always fun. I think again, one of our needs that we're always continually focusing on is supporting our children at the elementary school with social and emotional character development and behavior. And so we have a couple of different ideas in utilizing our paraprofessionals, hopefully more effectively to support some of that after winter benchmark and our results come in. But we've also started to implement a social emotional curriculum that our teachers will teach weekly in their classrooms. So we're super thankful for the counselor's support. So Mrs. Foltz has been out on maternity leave, but Mrs. Bronick has come in and helped sub and make sure that students are still receiving the support and the attention. And just sometimes the conversations that they need when they're going through a lot. And she uses an anti bullying curriculum in the classroom. But this is more about identifying emotions. It starts teaching kids about what the emotions are and what to do when they feel them. So hopefully, like you can feel angry, don't hit your friends. We're also doing cotton circle. Yeah, I'm excited.
I just wondered how how do you teach the teachers to.
I luckily, so like luckily, we have this amazing professional development. And this was something that my staff, they were like, well, what about this? And so they're all on board and they are also learning as well.
Yeah, I was just wondering who taught.
Definitely, definitely. Or the principal, really, who teaches her. Yeah, so I'm gonna go in with kindergarten.
Oh, okay.
So one thing that's cool is they have different lessons. So it's a K six curriculum. So we're all talking about emotions. And then we'll all kind of move through that. And then so I love that it is tied in and has vertical alignment, which I think is really great. And the kids will probably get to hear it year after year because I feel like that is something that we can always continue to work on is just supporting our students. Katie, my secretary has just been doing such a fabulous job this year. I'm so thankful for her. She's already busy scheduling our parent teacher conferences in March and making sure I complete my social emotional lessons. So thank you for that, Darren. And um, a couple of also fun highlights here. If you guys looked through my newsletter, we have some great pictures of the Christmas program. We have cheer camp and little dribblers happening at the elementary school right now. We have a lot of little dribblers and we have thirty cheer camp participants, which we're very excited about. Yes, it's been like I have had to work on my classroom management skills again. So that's been fun. And we will perform on Friday during the girls varsity, like during the halftime. So come check it out.
This coming Friday.
Yeah. And um, we have I have I included a picture of Russ reading the story to preschool, which seemed pertinent because we're sure missing him here tonight. And some, I don't know if any of you guys ever have free time, but you can always come to the elementary school to help first graders and kindergartners put on their snow loads. Preschool is actually even worse because Mrs. Jones has like a step by step of what they put on. And one student got all the way to the end, but realized they like missed step two, so they took off all of their clothes and started. So that was today. So anyways, um, and so and we'll have a January assembly on the thirty first at one forty-five. We'll figure that. Do you guys have any questions? Anything for me? Um, I think another area of support that has definitely been on my radar and Pat had heard me talk about is just continually professional development for our special education staff. We're feeling a high need right now at the elementary school. We I feel like we have some students that need some specific support. I have a para later that Pat will address that's resigning, but I think we have a plan for that in place. We've had some good people show interest. And so that that's just something that it seems like is of high on my radar, shall I say.
Okay, perfect. Horns. We're in the full swing of things now. Winter is here, the weather, the sport, all the things. And we're busy and we're going and they will, everybody's gonna start to head different directions. We had our meeting the other day talking about all the different buses and so far so good, I think, on finding transportation for everybody. So hopefully we'll get them all where they need to go. We have all of the, you know, F F A is going, robotics is going, the high school wrestling, high school basketball. We will begin middle school wrestling February. So after we meet the next time and we will begin February tenth. So right before we meet the next time, I believe. And then we will begin fifth, sixth grade basketball right after we meet the next time. Um, so that is one issue that we are looking at that I needed to let you know of. Looking forward to fifth and sixth grade basketball. We I had discussed and brought to you some previous hires. And Shalena Clark was approved as one of the girls' coaches. And she just told me for personal reasons this year and very understandably she needs to step away. Uh, she wanted to say thank you. She was extremely apologetic and thankful for the opportunity. But for her family needs, she's gonna take some time. And so I will need to post that opening for fifth and sixth grade basketball. And then I spoke again to both of the boys' coaches from previous and they have both decided that it is time. They need something. So I will need to post both boys' positions as well. So luckily we have some time, but it's gonna go up and out eventually. So if you know of anyone, please help spread the word and send them my way. It's a short season, six weeks. And lots of fun because those are very enthusiastic little people learning to play the sport. Do you have any questions about that so far? Okay. I things are just going. They're 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 moving along, you know, they're having a good time. I love going in and peeking in all the rooms for the practices and going to the events and things are moving along. So I don't have anything specific about those before I go into my M H S A stuff unless you have questions for me about anything. Okay. It's that fun time of year where you get to listen to all these proposals that M H S A has put forward. And I will represent you and be your vote at their meeting next Monday. And there are six proposals that they would like us to consider this year. And the first one is the student below ninth grade. It's a proposal to amend requirements for eligibility for participation in an association contest by law students below ninth grade. So we in the past have already moved forward into allowing eighth graders to participate in all the things except football. Basically, I'll summarize, this one was brought forth. It's been discussed a lot in our circles. It's brought forth because they want to eliminate a line. They want to delete the line that says committed to a contest at the high school level. The eighth grade student may not also participate in the same sport at that level under high school concurrently. So for example, our junior high basketball season and our high school basketball season overlap a bit. And we do, you know, allow our eighth graders to play up depending on the year and this year being one of them. We don't move them up. We have them finish their junior high season. They've been with that team. We have them finish out their tournament. And then we let them let them be with the high school. Even if they were to go with high school before, that practice doesn't count before their season is done. So they can't starting can't start counting their practices until after their season ends. And so it wouldn't have worked out to play a varsity contest, for for example, they would never have had enough practices in. But the way it worked out our season, they were able to get to the J V contest this year because of the way the dates felt. It doesn't always work that way. It's been brought up by other schools, specifically smaller schools, that that's a problem because the way the seasons in every district may shift a little bit, you know, they're they're kind of the same, but they shift a little bit. So if they have their eighth graders playing up in order, some can't make a high school team without their eighth graders. And they can't make a junior high team and they don't want to take away from their junior high team. And they so, you know, or vice versa. If they let them play in the junior high team, they can't make a high school team. But you can play different sports. So for example, the one B that we're moving into, they did tell me they're changing this. So this probably won't be the way it is when when I see you next year in this role. But currently, they still play what I knew growing up. They play girls' basketball in the fall and volleyball in the winter. So their junior high is like the old school timing. And so what they have is they have and they left it that way because they have their eighth graders playing volleyball and they play high school basketball at the same time. And they're allowed to do that because they're different sports. And so the rationale was, well, if you're allowing them to play two sports at the same time, why can't they play two sports at the same time that are the same? And so this would just allow them to count the practices. If we overlapped, they'd be able to play on the high school team, count those practices and play high school ball maybe a week sooner than we already let them. So I, um, do you just want to kind of do a straw vote on each one as we go? So I know how going forward. Okay.
What's your recommendation?
Um, I would recommend to approve this one. I I think if you're gonna let them play two sports, why does it matter? Or if they've been playing on sports following the rules in your school of participation, why can't those practices count towards? So I I would go with this one. I I understand this one. And I would recommend that you vote for this one.
Yeah, sounds good.
The second one is a proposal to amend requirements for eligibility for participation in an association contest by law transfer rule. So this one is adding a line to the transfer rule already. So a student who moves into a new district or school upon a corresponding change of residence by the parents with whom the student was living during his or her previous school enrollment. However, if the move is within a fifty mile radius, then the transfer rule applies. The rationale is that. It reduces ambiguity, it enhances fairness, string lines oversight and upholds competitive balance. So. There's a lot of. There's always a lot of movement or discussion of how to. Get around. The transfer rule, you know, there's always.
It's like from here to Highwood or something like that, or here to Big Sandy.
So.
They'd have to sit out.
Yes, because you're we're seeing a lot of people, well, I don't, I wanna go, this is, you got a good player this year. I can, you know, I'm just moving ten miles, I'm just ten miles down the road, I'm gonna go play with you.
It's like, I'm gonna go live with my other parent.
Yes. And so it's kind of been used as a tool that's allowed people to kind of get around it. So I I would say I actually agree with it because it's one of those gray areas. I I get it, but if we're gonna have the rule, we get up the rule, right?
So your recommendation is to?
Is to allow the um to add the.
Add the this the verbiage.
Yes.
Okay, for clarification.
The yeah, I I it's how I see it as a clarification because.
Wasn't there a ninety day rule at one time?
It's it is a ninety, that's the transfer rule. So if you were to move. You have to sit out, it's about ninety, it's half of your school days.
Okay.
So ninety was when we were at one eighty. So it'd be right around there. Um in order to just get. So you can't move here and here and here and here and, you know, bounce around. Yeah, and sit out. You can play JV, you just can't play the varsity. This is, this is saying, well, you can't go move with your dad twenty miles down the road so that. You can go to that school and still play varsity. The transfer rule will apply because you moved.
But I couldn't, I couldn't rent, I couldn't rent um an apartment in Highwood. And then have my kid go to Highwood and play sport without one transfer.
Yeah, that's what, yeah. So they're finding, like, to me, the way I'm understanding this, I guess. Is, yeah, they're renting places or because they're close, right? So you live where you live, I'm gonna go to Highwood and I'm gonna rent a place.
Get a mailbox.
Get a mailbox. And you can do that because it's within, like, it's like it's reasonable. So they kind of got away with it before. This is saying if you're switching and you're moving, you're moving. You can't. So to me, it's a clarification. Uh then maybe maybe I'm misinterpreting it differently than you are, Joelle.
No, I not, no, well, okay.
Cause it, I get it, these are.
I think it applies to like a kid who, like, let's say there's a kid who has. Two parents and they live within fifty miles of each other. You can't decide to go live with the other parent.
Yeah.
Um and switch schools.
Yeah.
And you also can't move within a fifty mile radius. And transfer to a different school.
Without, you'll have to follow the transfer rules.
You have to follow the transfer rules, yeah. Which there are certain cases that will affect, yeah, absolutely.
To me, I just see this being kind of a sturdier line.
Yeah.
So I would, if it were me personally, I would recommend it, but. It's, I will.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah.
Somebody.
You're a name.
Uh this is, yeah, if a parent's gonna live one place and another place, it's not the school's problem. I guess. It's just me.
But if they're more than.
I think it's more or less trying to cut down on that, the get an address or a mailbox. And cutting down on that situation.
Yeah.
To alleviate that more than, more so than a parent, like going to live with your actual parent.
And there are appeal systems in place and we have used them for cases where that has been the case.
I don't have a passion for it.
Does anybody else?
I agree with you.
MHSA board probably has their mind made up anyway, so.
Bam.
Tuesday.
Um number three, so we're going now into basically NIL. Um is where this is the rest of is coming from. So. Number three is a proposal to amend requirements for eligibility for participation in association contest by law. So. They had an award rule and they are brushing that all out and writing a new one. And this says a student participant may not accept monetary compensation in recognition of activity performance, participation or achievement. But they may accept non-monetary compensation um in recognition of activities, ability, participation or achievement. If the total. Including the actual value of the gift certificates does not exceed five hundred dollars. For purpose of this rule. Non-monetary does not include customary awards such as our letters and things that we provide them, sportsmanship awards, um awards. That were purchased and presented by the parents. Um for the purpose of this rule. These items which have been part of the previous awards rule would be included in non-monetary compensation, training apparel for practice. Um you know, before we weren't, you you're not allowed to give them things, but if if we. We don't give them our training apparel usually. In a lot of cases, in, you know, the basketball, they give it back, things like that, but we could give them training apparel. The schools may provide warm-up shirts. Um in the past, usually the programs bought them or the kids bought them themselves, but if the school had the money and wanted to, now they could. Uh fundraising activities, individual miniature trophies. Um this rule does not regulate or prohibit compensation received by a student for ability. Participation or achievement in a non-MHSA sport or activity. Um culture directors responsible for reporting any items that they have received. A student participating without compensation as a contestant in athletic or other activities may accept the use of necessary equipment. Uh when a student is selected by chance or random draw to participate in a halftime or pregame contest. Um he or she may accept the cash now without affecting eligibility under their the rule. They went to the MSU game or something and I don't know, like, you know, participated in an activity, they can do that now. Uh they become ineligible from the date of the report of violation if they accept cash or they're awarded something valued over five hundred dollars. Um so. You know, we're we're getting into discussion now, they're getting discussion now because college athletes are getting paid and they're. Next one, you'll see it's trickling down into us. So. I I, you know, we.
So Booster Club could give like an all-state player. A gift certificate to Shields for like five hundred bucks.
Wrong, it's under five hundred dollars. A total for all the things, yeah, for all the things they receive. So now that would be.
This is, is this saying, is this approved or is this?
This allows you to give not cash, this now allows them to get. A non-monetary compensation or item of value.
And remain eligible.
And remain eligible before they couldn't, before they couldn't receive.
Oh, man, that's not a very good idea.
So I don't really know how I, I mean, I, like, when you look at it.
Who's gonna regulate this?
Uh yeah, but I also, when I see it, like, I feel like I wanna say. Yes, because it's a safety net, like if we've got warm-up shirts or so, you know, I don't wanna fall into the trap where I did something dumb and I didn't even realize it, but. I don't know.
Fairly low dollar. I mean, I don't know. A hundred dollars would be more reasonable, honestly, because it would cover.
Yeah, so I don't know where they came up with their five hundred dollars. Well, I don't know, I don't, you know, I didn't know where they came up with this.
About their state associations, we got nervous.
I I've heard the talk that yes, everything of NIL is coming down into everything high school everywhere.
They don't, what they wanna do is avoid bribes, right? Or the ability to buy a student and five hundred dollars is a pretty high dollar amount.
It is.
Oh, that's already.
I mean, I know it's not, you can buy some kid a Nintendo, but you don't have.
That's like, oh, here the current MHSA allows up to a hundred dollars.
Sure.
At camps, tournaments, postseason thing, what's our fundraiser?
That's my reason most.
Yeah.
I say now.
That's it, no two. Um I'm for no. Rationale is just America, the surrounding states, that's the reason they want to do it. I'd say no.
Okay, that's. Literally so far, which. Okay. All right, the next one is the proposal to amend requirements for eligibility for participation in association contest by law. Where they are striking their amateur rule and writing a new amateur rule, where all contestants must be considered amateurs. Amateurs, and they define often engage in athletics for educational, physical, mental and social benefits. Um they're in a vacation and athlete forfeits amateur status in a sport by competing for or accepting money or other mon- monetary compensation. It is permissible for a student to accept necessary meals, lodging and transportation in connection. It is, um they forfeit amateur status by playing or managing under an assumed nickname. By receiving an award or prize monetary value that exceeds the amount approved by MHSA. Except as provided under by law sixteen point two permitting the use of name, image, gender or likeness. In the promotion of a commercial or profit-making event, item, plan or service. A student that becomes a professional is considered a professional in that sport and ineligible for further high school athletic competition. They are, they forfeit their amateur status if they sell a prize, won in a competition, if they bet on a contest. Um. Under by law sixteen point one, the term commercial or profit-making event, item, plan or service. Means any situation in which the person or entity will receive or hopes to receive anything of value. But does not include certain student participation in fundraising activities for the nonprofit organization. This also does not prohibit a student from participating in any such event. Item, plan or service sponsored by or benefiting the student's MHSA member school. Under their term as an athlete, they shall not include use of the name, image or likeness of a student participating in an MHA-sponsored event. Unless otherwise explicitly permitted or prohibited by state or federal law or the MHSA member school policy. Students may engage in NIL activities subject to the following. The NIL activities may not include an image or likeness of the student in their uniform or clothing. Provided by the MHSA or our school. The student shall not use any MHSA or member school facilities. Proprietary patents, products, copyrights or equipment for the purpose of the NIL activity. The student shall not use any MHSA or our school's game film for the purpose of the NIL activity. The student shall not promote promote any person or entity, service or product during the MHSA member school's scheduled school day or activity. When required to follow the MHSA or our school's uniform or dress requirements, the student may not wear any person's or entity's logo. In any way on them. No compensation for the NIL activity may be provided by the MHSA member school or an agent of the school or anyone affiliated with the school. The student shall not promote activities, services or products directly in any way associated with alcohol, tobacco, nicotine, vaping, controlled substances. Any item, activity or conduct prohibited or unlawful for a school-aged student, gambling of any kind. Violation may result in a determination by the school and the MHSA of the ineligibility. Um compliance with these rules does not guarantee the NIL activity or activities comply with other laws or rules, which may affect the student later on. Um. Accepting a nominal standard for your salary for instructing, supervising or officiating youth sports programs. Shall not jeopardize their amateur status, so we could pay them to be a referee and that's still okay. A student may be reinstated as an amateur after not less than one calendar year has elapsed since the date he or she was declared professional. Um. So the interpretations in the end say a student athlete may work in camps. Where they're not participating as a camper, they may fulfill duties that include officiating, coaching, instructing at a camp. They may be employed in intramural sports programs of his or her school in which duties include officiating. Participate as an individual or member of a team against professional athletes, but the student athlete may not participate on the professional team. They may participate or work in summer athletic camps, but any awards accepted must not conflict with the awards rule. And they may participate in sports during the summer or during the season when the player is not a member of the regular high school team, providing monetary compensation is not received. It's out of a lot of words.
Wow.
And I didn't read all of them together. So it's basically NIL, but they can't do it during our time with any of our affiliation on them.
I feel like this is. Not really, I don't know. Not really issued. I was kidding, Montana, but um it's a state issue and it, it, I mean. Yes, it doesn't really matter if they support it or not from MHSA.
And it, it does say the rule is pending approval from the legislative section by the state law to allow this. Currently thirty-eight of fifty states allow NIL for high school. And this proposal is consistent with other surrounding state policies that have been implemented.
Hmm, really, kind of. The executive board proposed it very important. Well, to be consistent with the last one, we should oppose it, right?
Well, it's not really about monet, I mean, it's about monetary, but. That was specific money-wise, I.
This just says they can't wear longhorn gear and to promote themselves.
Yeah, they can, they're allowed to promote themselves with all, except for under all those things I said. Not during school time, not during game time, not during practice time, not in longhorn gear, not in MHSA gear.
Put it this way, if they toss this law, it's probably good if we have some MHSA requirements around it. So maybe it's a good thing to vote for it.
Yeah, that way it's regulated. They promote themselves every Friday. With longhorn gear. I must, I must understand.
They're not making pay, they're not.
But Coca-Cola is gonna cut the law through the, the Gatorade.
Yeah. This is me if I wear my Tommy Malone shirt today, you know, he's he's got, he's got NIL, he's making money from up top because I got the Tommy shirt.
I misunderstood.
So this is, you know, like.
We had a student last.
No, no, he's like, she wants to wear. Sure, you know.
We had a, we had a student last summer that traveled with a team. They, that person could have been, they could have gotten paid sponsored by Coca-Cola.
Yeah, yeah.
That's an example.
As long as they did not, it didn't conflict with our school.
They didn't wear our school logos, they did whatever, they.
Yeah.
It wasn't, that person wasn't a student of ours while they were competing in that event, so therefore could have gotten the sponsorship blink, whatever it might be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel like if the last pass MHSA has to have some, something, players around it. And so I guess why not support.
And I, and I guess if they're saying, you know, I'm trusting that they did the legwork because I did not. If that this is a consistent policy that's already in place and working for other states, it's probably a good place to start.
It's gonna sound.
Okay. Um the next one is a proposal to amend penalties by law. So. An attendee ejected by mutual agreement of the official and administration from a regular season or MHS, MHSA tournament contest. Will incur a minimum three-game event suspension suspension from that team's game events. And all other MHSA game and events in the interim at any level of competition. If the ejection occurs with fewer than three games or events remaining in the season, the suspension will carry over to the school of sports even immediately following. One attendee ejected for a second time during a school year shall be suspended for a minimum of one calendar year. From all MHSA regular and postseason events. MHSA member schools may increase these minimum penalties at their discretion. The rationale is that Montana needs a consistent policy for fan ejections across the state. And this hopefully will serve as a deterrent for fans and promote better sportsmanship.
You would?
I say yes, you know.
We think you could run into any situations where you have bad blood between a ref and a certain fan and. I don't know.
Well, you know, in the two years.
Bring in administration.
Yeah, so as we, and in the, I know two years is not a long time. But luckily I've only had to deal with one incident. They're pretty. I, you know, they're pretty. They so far have been pretty level and fair and even maybe more lenient than I wish they would be sometimes, honestly. I mean. And maybe I hear it more than they do, or they just have thicker skin sometimes, but. I think. And and I think too, you know, that there, we already have the policy of um. Of uh. They're missing the three, you know, the the three events. So this is like. If they're given fair warning.
And it is by agreement of the official and the administration, like you said, so that's probably.
You guys.
Sounds good.
And then the final one is a proposal to amend requirements for eligibility for participation in association contest by law. And they're going, it's about your uh physical exam. So currently we have. they're going, it's about your, uh, physical exam, so currently we have to have a, you know, a doctor, a sports physical every year. Uh, what they want, they want to strike out the line where it says the certification is valid for a period of one school year. And they're gonna, would like to change to physical examinations conducted May first and thereafter are valid for the following two school years. Physical examinations conducted prior to May first are valid only for the remainder of that school year and the following. Um, and then at the end, an interim history form is required during the off years when no physical examination is conducted and must be submitted to the school prior to the first practice. Let's get to the rationale. The timing of a comprehensive physical exam occurring between one and three years is supported by numerous organizations. A two-year physical exam would help alleviate the strain on medical providers. They believe that P P is best used in conjunction with athletes' medical home primary care, care provider incorporated into the routine healthcare supervision. The goal of this change is to encourage families to have the P P formed as part of the routine well child check. The two-year physical exam would facilitate a move away from mass physicals strongly discouraged by the NFHS and to the medical home office where the provider is familiar with the athletes' medical history. And following the recommendations encouraging this two-year physical to incur at the medical home or the primary care provider's office increases the effectiveness, safety, and completeness of the examination and is considered best practice.
Hundred percent, yes.
Let's take those with me and I will let you know how they go. Um, I will attend Monday. And it is, it's the all-state meeting. I also noticed on the notes that the Northern B has a meeting that they hold together there. I'm going to try to sneak into that room and introduce myself and um, get our foot in the door, ready for next year. Do you have any questions for me before I go? Thank you, guys.
So, yeah, my miss being blessed tonight, want to wish him well.
Hi, how's your report?
And yeah.
Want me to cover it? Kayla, you want to turn it?
You got it.
Okay, so I was gonna read you what the report says. As you're aware, Russ is away from us and we're thinking positive thoughts about his recovery from his surgery today. And, uh, there's a comment to talk about, let me read that for you. You and pleasure. Uh, thanks for staff, we're keeping the school clean over the holiday. Uh, Larry, Aiden, Cory, we had, uh, one of our pairs, Jackie, uh, helped us during Christmas at the elementary school. It was, and they're doing, they did a great job. Russ wanted to thank the city crew for some snow removal, a huge job last time, so he wanted to pass along thank you to them. We're nearing completion. Remember that we approved the purchase of three heating units in the high school. And, you know, it's one of those things when you hear that we're gonna replace these three heating units and it's, oh, they're just gonna pull the old one out, put the new one in. Well, that's been, it's been far from easy. Uh, it's much, much more complicated than just that, and, uh, they found all kinds of interesting things when they pulled, started pulling three different units out, so teachers, staff's been great and flexible as, as best we can to move around when those guys needed access to the rooms and, um, and such. Uh, but the two are ninety-five percent, as you can see, there, I don't know where they ended up today. He tagged this report before he left. They know, I know they made progress today as well, but hot water's flowing through the pipes and the rooms are, are warm now. We just gotta get the blowers working and that kind of thing, and I think they're pretty close to done, maybe tomorrow. Um, they started Monday installing pipes, uh, and they should be ready to, ready for the speech and drama meet, uh, which we are hosting this Saturday.
Oh, yes, thank you. I meant to say that.
That's okay, yeah.
Skip that out of my notes.
I, I got, I'll give Russ credit because he's been on these guys about getting it done. But when he commented to them that we're gonna have a hundred additional people in the building, you know, we have sporting events going on or whatever, but in the speech and drama meet, people are in the classrooms in addition to our own students, so we don't want to have the, the rooms in a state of disrepair where we have visitors in the building, so. Um, you talked about Brendan starting on the air system to the boilers last week, and the work will continue on that project. They do have a water leak, as you see this lovely picture you wanted to share with us in the high school crawl space. And they'll work on that as soon as time permits. Valves are off under the girls restroom in the foyer, and the picture represents most of the valves down, down there, so they will get changed out if we get major project to replace more heaters. Um, Michael said they are still hopeful on the grant from Bear Paw. I hadn't heard anything about that for a while, actually, so the fact that there's still a hope that we might get that grant is, is a reason for optimism. So we hope to know by the end of February. Uh, I know that Craig and his crew are gonna start in the restrooms and locker rooms, I, I sure hope so. And, uh, we've been, uh, waiting for that and, uh, um, didn't quite nail it down, but it sounds like that's gonna get going. And then I'll let you read the rest of what he has there to say, and he hopes, can't wait to get back.
He wants everybody to know everything's covered.
Yeah.
Everything's good, and you're gonna strap it.
Yeah, everybody, he's got like FICO and stuff, like they're checking all the boilers and stuff, yeah, computer and, yeah. Good.
He's got Kayla and Kelly in the wings if we need something, so, yeah, yeah. So that's the, it's.
Thank you very much.
I also have Callie's report. I think she sent out a report, uh, to you all. Um, and, um, she wanted me to share her general report included at the end of the second fiscal quarter and the budget.
I have.
Yeah, okay, great, let's do that. Again, I think she sent, she may have sent this out, uh, yesterday or last, in the last week. But, uh, the end of second fiscal quarter and the budget looks to be on track. We'll have to continue to be vigilant with spending to ensure that we are managing the maintenance projects, um, as that is currently our largest expenditure items on our month. Uh, Monday, excuse me, stand-up meetings with the leadership team. I've been starting to ask about expenditures and hopes, and we, we start to be more mindful of that and try to run some of those things by Callie before we just, uh, excuse me, purchase. Uh, we will have quarterly financial reports at next month's meeting to review. Uh, the election, of course, is upcoming, the levy election. Ballots have been certified, notices will go in the paper this week. I'll talk more about that in my report. And ballots will be mailed on the twenty-second. The official election day will be February eleventh, which happens to be our board meeting. So Callie will make a brief appearance at the board meeting that night, and then we'll begin counting the ballots. W T's, W two's, and ten ninety-nine tax forms have all been mailed. And, uh, the trustee filing is now open, as, as was mentioned in the December meeting that was upcoming. District one is Kyler Wright and Joellen Clark, and the Nice district is Dusty Schuler, and all are up for reelection.
One thing she forgot to mention in there is, um, we, she paid off, we wrote to check to pay off the intercapital. Let's pay it off.
Great, well, that's good news, yeah. I think we have to.
Yes, that was, yeah. Yeah, we just gotta do the levy now, the levy passed.
We do need a motion to adopt the federal mileage rate to seventy.
Yes, we do.
Okay, I think she mentioned that to you, did she? Okay. For Callie, your twenty twenty-five.
Yes, and it's seven, it goes up to seventy, seventy cents.
Seventy cents, wow. So we're doing the motion for that.
So moved, started.
And it seems like a weird formality to vote for what we have to do anyway, but. Did you have a question?
No, no.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? Yeah, Ellen, favor say aye.
Aye.
And I believe that called elections for the trustee election?
Yes, that's what that's for, yeah.
And, um, did she happen to tell you the date? Are we calling for the election for a specific date?
The trustee election always happens on that May.
Yeah.
The first, first Tuesday of May, yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I thought that she actually maybe have done it in December, but evidently not.
And I thought we did too, actually.
So I think we're gonna scratch that. Yeah, I think that was better.
I thought we did it.
I think we did. And I don't know if there's any.
I don't believe there's any opposite.
I do have a question about the levy. Um, I don't know if we can discuss that favor now or under your report, but.
As you wish.
Um, we, you know, we're trying to get out to community and promote it a little bit. I went to a women's club meeting um, this last week and talked to them and really didn't get a lot of questions. I just went with the talking points, so we had written up. Everyone was positive, but seemed thankful for the overview. So if anyone has any other suggestions of places we should.
We're going, Roxanne, or actually it's on my, it's on my report, we're going to the Lions Club meeting on Thursday.
All right.
And, uh, she and I were talking today about other places we might roost, and if, if you have any community organizations, again, I attached in my board report, um, the same notes that we handed out in December. All attached to my board report, I'll send out tomorrow. And I would certainly encourage you in your, in your circles, meetings you go to, to just take those with. I talked to Raymond today and we're gonna hand that out. Maybe you did the same with the women's club meeting. I'm actually gonna hand that out.
I didn't hand it out, but, um, I did mention in Bethany's article in the River Press. And then you're putting more in this week, photos and.
And she talked to Russ and took some pictures, and so I think that's, that would be a good talking.
Are we feeling like that's adequate? We don't need to do a video or any further.
Ben, Bethan, yeah, we talked about making sure that if we could get a link to those, I'd like somehow posting them on our Facebook page, because that reaches such a different demographic. I don't know about a video. I, and to be honest with you, I, we.
Yeah, we've talked about anything that's.
Get your, that stuff, the repression.
But I, I think the Facebook page is a great idea, and both elementary and middle school, high school Facebook page, so.
Yeah, I agree, that's a good thing.
If we could do that in addition, again, in any of these other community, kind of facing from the people, kind of, something could be to our advantage.
Yeah. I think that's. Because then again, it's just like showcasing your information. It's not really like us motivating, you know what I mean? We have to, we can, we can inform, but we can't like, be like, hey, vote for us, right?
Yeah. Thank you.
I have one question on the maintenance at the elementary, that project. Did we have a signed contract with the engineer on that? Or, no, for the plumbing and stuff?
Yeah.
It's all done.
The, no, the heating and ventilation, the, the one we're working on right now.
Oh.
Yeah, I think so, and it's all, I, as far as I know, my understanding in brief conversation, I think it's all divided up. So it's small enough amounts where we don't have to divvied up. Uh, did he do it?
We didn't have to have that particular portion of it.
Well, that was the original plan, was it was supposed to be different, tall enough, but.
Yes, well, I was just, I'm worried it's gonna go over budget by a lot. So if we could just keep an eye on that.
If it's, I don't know if we, there's, we can call it a budget if it's the state's big guy at the state's making us do it.
Well, they gave us numbers. The engineer gave us numbers on what it was gonna cost. And hopefully he's accurate.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. Thank you for having me on. I think we're on to your.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna talk about the emergency handbook a little later, and again, I've, it occurred to me I should make more copies, but I, I've attached. There'll be a link inside my board report tomorrow for the emergency handbook. I shared that in December. The, um, the updating that was done in there was simply to modernize some of the verbiage. And, uh, we, the policy committee met tonight to review that handbook. And, um, we are simply adding, uh, a line to the front of it, which I'll add, I'll, a dust before I send it out tomorrow. It says this document is for our internal use only. And, um, that we would not be posting this on our website to make, uh, for public access. It's for our internal, uh, administration and leadership of the schools to have access to. Um, the, we decided not to upgrade, you know, look another sample. Like, I got a couple of different samples from our M S G A A rep. But, um, generally we decided to use what we had because we needed to get this back out to our people. And then we're, we're, uh, in the process of updating maps, uh, that are in the back of this. Um, just to make it a little bit better or user-friendly and, um, more modern, if you will, and, um, uh, that ties into, you might recall that in, uh, December, I also talked about the emergent three app. We are moving forward with that. Carly and I had a, um, Mrs. Vayu and I had a, uh, meeting with the, first kind of initial meeting with the rep. And we're doing an administrative training next Monday, and then we'll begin assigning staff trainings for, after that. And then we'll begin uploading the app to our devices. And, um, I've got a couple, uh, resources of other schools who are using the emergent three app. And, um, I need to get some thoughts about how we organize groups. School board is a group. Leadership team is a group, all the bus drivers are, are groups, so that, so we have communication. Um, it was brought up earlier about, uh, buses not running. You know, you have a group, so you literally push a button and everyone's notified at one time. So, um, the emergency handbook will tie into that nicely, and, um, uh, so that's moving forward as well. Like I said, there isn't a lot of difference in the emergency handbook. We haven't changed practices or policies. We just sort of organized it better, to be honest with you. The other thing that was in there is that, and I plan to host our first crisis intervention team meeting. It was listed, there was a crisis intervention team in the previous handbook. But to the best of my knowledge, no one could tell me when the last time or if they ever met. So it's our intent to meet so they understand what their role is in the event of a crisis. Having a very big crisis in the school district, what exactly would the role of that team be? I've talked to members in the community, a couple of members of the board. And so we will meet and just review what our role would be in the event of a crisis. That's upcoming as well. Uh, as was mentioned, it'll be attached. I'll have the levy notes attached again for your viewing pleasure. And the only other thing I had to share this month is on the, I forgot to put them up. But, uh, Mrs. Benjamin, would you grab a couple of those posters and just show folks? So on our thirteenth of December, we had this team building event. And these were some of the paintings the staff went to get.
We are pretty amazing artists.
Yes, we will be giving lessons out later, don't worry.
This was a follow-up to the student training we had last.
It's pretty amazing.
And it is, they're pretty amazing. These were just, these were done by our staff. And they came along about forty, forty-five minutes into the, we're supposed to be quiet. It's supposed to be just completely.
But you couldn't talk at all.
Couldn't talk at all. She was playing music as we were painting. And then you'll notice that there's a, there's white in the painting. And when we first got started, there was no white at all in it. And she sent some saboteurs amongst the group, and they, they came with to the paintings and they, they splashed paint, white on it. And they made a mess and you had to adjust, you had to adapt. And so that was kind of what it was all about, but, um, and working together and out, out of it came some really great conversations among staff. You have middle school, uh, high school teachers working with elementary teachers, which is incredibly positive experience, because we don't interact with each other like this. And what I thought was cool is we built an agenda for the day that included three fifteen-minute breaks, and we never took one. We had breakfast together and we got started, and the next thing you know, it's twelve fifteen. I mean, it was unbelievable, and I, I, if you get a chance to ask a teacher, somebody that attended, it, it was really, really positive. So impressed. And out of that came some, some things for us to continue to work on to make our, continue to make our school better. One of those was, um, continue to build positive relationships, which is what we obviously hope for in, in building a community and school. It's something that's always very important. They talked about school spirit was an idea that came, one of the things was a K through twelve homecoming.
Mm-hmm, we're really gonna work on that for next year, bring that sweet dance back.
Uh, one of the, there was, there was some discussion about more improved parent involvement in the middle school, high school. And some discussion about how we can get more parents to attend our conferences, parent conferences, for example. And then the final one is that, that Roxy talked about was the social emotional kind of curriculum. That's what, that came out of that dis- discussion, so. It was a really, you know, you, you, you kind of hold your breath as an administrator for these kind of events that everyone will kind of, uh, embrace it or whatever, and you could feel it in the room when we first got there. What did we get ourselves into? But it, it didn't take ten minutes, and this lady was wonderful. It didn't take about ten minutes and people relaxed, and we mixed, the groups kind of mixed, you know, with different staffs. And it was, it was really, really, uh, a great experience, so little, uh, little update on that. We, uh, Roxy and I continue to work on the accreditation process. We're meeting again tomorrow. The, the process, as you heard me say before, is a new process. We're now in the second year. Uh, and, uh, we, boy, we're learning a lot. And so, uh, we're continuing to work on that, and I'll continue to give you updates on that as we proceed and begin to plan for next year. Um, I'm still looking at adding measure of academic progress map assessment to our repertoire of assessments in the high school and middle school, probably in the middle school grades, and I'll let you know about that. And I've got some dates on the back, and that's pretty much my report for this year. And so I guess with that addition, I can call, I don't, how do we do that for the, because I, I forgot, I didn't get hard copies for everybody, but I did hand this out in December. Can we still have, this is the first reading of the.
I think so, yeah.
And the only thing we, we are changing at this point is. And the only thing we we are changing at this point is to add the a sentence that says this document is for internal use only, otherwise. And I'll I'll include that in the attachment tomorrow. Otherwise, the 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 document is as it was presented in December and will be presented in my report tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, they're always included on the agendas and, you know, just information item anyway. It's not like we take action on it first reading. But we just need to remember to have it on the agenda.
Yeah.
For next time, for final approval.
Yeah.
And then um. Well, I guess we're moving on to committee reports. We have a policy committee meeting to report on, so.
Yeah, we had a policy, we had a meeting on the policies. We talked about the uh um community use agreement. Gym policy and opening it up to the gym to use on Sundays as a uh. Um have a test phase to see if we wanna keep Sundays available or not. Um we decided ten to four. For Sunday use for people to keep on.
Question.
Um we talked about the early graduation policy and some changes in that. Um changes as instead of uh. Um satisfy the minimum requirements for graduation after completion of the, it was the sixth uh semester, it is now the seventh. And we did change it to where any student that is applying for um early graduation will not be allowed to do senior trip. Um things like that. Um the other policy.
The point, excuse me, Dusty, the point I would make about the change from six semesters to seven was that. You might recall, uh quite a good of the board, that a year ago, we we accepted the um. I made a recommendation to accept the request of three students to graduate after six semesters. We uh six uh six, yeah, six semesters. We did that thinking because there had been a new state law saying that. If that happened, we could still get A and B for the students, what would be in their the fall of their senior year. Come to find out after MTSBA and OPI have their little disagreement, and we went back and forth. Come to find out, they actually have to be enrolled in our school in the fall of what would be their senior year or their seventh semester. In order for us to get that A and B for that year. So that's why the adjustment now to the policy. We have no advantage financially for us to allow a student to graduate early. We only gain that advantage if we allow them to, they they would have to come to school their seventh semester, the beginning, first half of their senior year, so.
The other policy that we looked at, and we did decide to table it for right now, is the um code of conduct. Policy for athletes, but that has been tabled, and we'll look at that again on a later date.
We basically think every, yeah, any changes you wanted to make, and so decided not to make any right now.
The other committee, as I mentioned before, is Paul would kindly ask that we schedule a transportation meeting prior to the February eleventh board meeting.
Um just I just wanna mention that those policies that we discussed need to be on first reading as well, so. If you want to see copies, um we had copies floating around, I don't know if we have enough.
I have cop, I have copies of the early graduations.
So the same thing about. The very small change in the government.
Okay, okay.
And no changes. Oh, I don't need a copy, is there any happening? Is someone else need one? Yeah. Okay, so transportation committee members, who are my transportation people, Steve Brand, Darren.
I think I think I'm, yeah.
I don't remember either.
I believe I'm, Darren, well, Dustin, Brad.
Okay.
Move to the next board meeting, eleventh of Feb.
Okay.
You wanna do it right before the next board meeting, or does you wanna do it before that sooner than that?
He just said before the February board meeting, he didn't give me a preference of like we did tonight with the policy committee.
I mean, I'm not seeing any any activities on the Tuesday before that, January twenty eighth either. Monday or Tuesday before that, probably be fair game.
Yeah, I'm fairly open.
So am I. Yeah, I just can't do Thursday nights, so I anytime after five, any other night, I might.
Oh, that's two Tuesdays, that's two Tuesdays. That's two weeks before. If you went with the twenty eighth of January, that's two weeks before the board meeting, sorry. Probably, yeah.
Well, if it works for Paul, I know we just do it before the board meeting.
Yeah.
The day of.
Okay. Do one, an hour and a half like we did tonight, do five thirty.
I think we could say six, and we could confirm with Paul. I don't think he needs more than an hour.
Okay. And well, we can put this.
Discussion on.
Cancellation on the agenda, cancellation policies, okay.
Yeah.
Um. January eleventh, six P M.
And if, again, I will confirm with him if he needs more time than that.
Okay.
He can have it as at this five thirty, then that's okay, guys.
Sounds good.
Uh resignations.
Do we have the, did I have her letter? Do you have her?
Oh, I, can we go back to these? I had one question for the personnel committee. What was the theory between the open gym on Sunday or try area? I just.
Currently it's closed.
Yeah.
Um but we're looking at opening it up. There's a couple of people that have key fobs that are wondering if we're if we will allow Sundays. So as a um kind of a feeler thing, we're gonna start ten of.
The ten to four.
Four is where we decided.
Do you have a couple? We only have three community members right now who have purchased a fob for gym use. And there's at least two more who would would if we opened Sundays up.
I guess the original reason we did that was for the custodial.
And so that's why we're gonna test having shortened hours instead of just, oh, you know, because Russell likes to work odd hours.
Yeah, I I guess that was just.
So that was our reasoning, trying the ten to four, so that it's unlimited time, and it still means Russell window. Either way.
Larry window.
And and Larry window. We did talk about how, you know, if there was some big project, we can, I'll call them and say, hey, sorry. We gotta test it this Sunday. We gotta be in the gym or.
Does the fob, does the fob work for the elementary and the high school gyms? It does.
Is it?
Oh, you have, it has.
I think it'll be programmed.
It'll definitely actually, it's programmed for both schools or not. Our old ones were not, yours though.
We both, we both.
The coaches do because and I like all the staff ones do.
I would bet the question.
But I don't, no.
Yeah, we we basically both, we both have been asked by people, a couple of people would never have the costs. If we couldn't give, you know, open up on Sunday, and so we thought we would just test drive a period of hours. As long as it doesn't conflict with what maintenance or anything we might be doing. Then we would give that a try till the end of the end of June, I guess, until they, until the the school year, until we re-up for next year. And just give it a try and then make a decision. We didn't change the policy. That's why we're just gonna, like you said, I use the expression test drive, an open window and see how that goes.
And Carly actually puts that in the functionality of the fob. You can't access it outside those.
And that's run by the mate Luke, and they're okay with this trial run or it's gonna be. So it's a surprise.
He he knows that people have been bugging. We've got a lot of questions, and it's been a discussion.
Okay.
So it's not gonna be a complete surprise.
Okay.
But that's why we decided to, we debated a window of time, or in the end, we decided the man who's speaking for Russ tonight. Suggested the ten to four window.
Okay.
And so we just thought, again, now we give that a give it a test run.
Okay.
Sorry to deviate.
No, you're fine.
It's okay.
So we received last week the resignation from Nicole Winkler, a paraprofessional at the elementary school. And uh I received it on January eighth, and I would uh, yeah, so she has resigned.
Effective.
Effective. Effective.
January twenty second.
January.
I believe it's the night letter.
Yeah, January twenty second. Okay, so we pass that around.
Sure.
Yeah. Um we have a potential in-house. What what I would do, uh Mrs. Benjamin has an interview tomorrow morning. And so a decision could be made to reassign a current employee to that to to fill that position. Uh that decision is yet to be made, but that's within the realm of possibility, so. Good chance of of that happening, okay? The other one I have is we interviewed this week, um uh Russ and I and and Roxy, um pending a background check. So I'd like to recommend the hiring of Danny Lehman as the elementary additional elementary custodian. You might recall. We back in the day, well before my time here, we used to have two high schools custodians and two elementary custodians. Elementary in particular is a lot of work. And so uh we'd like to add Danny to our staff to uh to be a custodian at the elementary school.
And that's a full-time?
Yes, sir. Yeah. So, second.
Thank you.
Will.
Any discussion? Yeah, Alan, favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I have a question about um Nicole Winkler.
Yeah.
So she was the one that we had hired with a stipend for. For the exploration we're really into today.
Yeah.
So we filled the obligations, what ways have been.
Really, really appreciate you asking that question. I think the thing that we still haven't done is they were gonna come and do a. Kind of a walkthrough, give us an idea of what rooms could be potential rooms for making here. And so I'll press her about, maybe we can do that before she departs on.
Sure.
The twenty second.
Just wanna make sure we didn't get many of the nugget what we expected or vice versa, and. Um I know that we tabled that, but we might find ourselves in need again, so.
Absolutely, yeah, and that's exactly why it would be nice for us to know, like the possibilities, what they would recommend. We should be thinking about for uh space spaces in the school districts, should we want to go down there, have that conversation again.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Are we um? Anything else? Future agenda items?
Transportation, please.
Transportation will be on there, yeah.
And the second readings.
Second readings, yeah.
It's the graduation policy too, I think.
Wait, would someone like to move to a journey?
Someone. Are you?
Alan Baker? All right.
Hi.
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 I don't even.
What? Oh.
I'm telling the. Who's the chairman of the.
Something that I.
For you?